Hi Bob.
Good evening, in these extraordinary times, welcome to the zoning board of appeals July twenty-third meeting. First up, we have a request from on a flying point number two associates, appeal number two thousand nineteen oh four. Kim John has asked for a postponement to, what was the date?
August thirteenth.
August thirteenth, do I hear a motion?
So move this chairman.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see those folks in August. Clarissa, you're on.
Appeal number twenty twenty zero one six, Norges Shikenskaya, twenty-three, Eightbells Road, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred thirteen four twenty-five, RA forty zoning. Bavarian's and under relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven. We're proposed side yard setback seven point five seven feet, minimum required is fifty-five. We're proposed combined side yard setback twenty-eight point five seven feet, minimum required is fifty-five. We're proposed survey surface twenty point six five percent and maximum permitted is fifty percent. And we're proposed rear yard setback is forty-three point zero eighteen, minimum required is sixty feet.
Good evening, and you are?
Good evening gentlemen, my name is Jeff Zahn, I'm the architect representing my client, Norges Shikenski.
All right, if you kind of raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I did.
State your name and your address.
Jeff Zahn, two fifteen Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York.
Okay, state your case.
Okay, what you have before you is we're looking for relief of a side yard setback. And the combined side yard setback for an proposed addition to the north side of the dwelling. As you know, the, you know, the area have small lots, so they're all pretty much non-conforming. And my client has a, you know, dining room that they use this for the summer climate and the dining room is, you know, just it's less than eight feet. So we're bumping out another additional eight feet to make that room larger for their gatherings. And that's why we did it off to the north side as opposed to the south side where we have a little bit more room, just because that's where the bedrooms are. And the, the flow wouldn't work that way. Which we would need a variance over there anyway, but this is, you know, a little bit more restrictive. And we're proposing, they have a covered porch in the rear of the property, on the rear of the house, which was getting developed into the interior space. So we just have a covered porch at the rear as well. There's, excuse me, with similar side yards in the area. I don't know if you want me to state some, some addresses that have pretty much the same relatively small, you know, we're asking for seven point five seven feet. There are numerous dwellings in the location that are that or a little bit less than that, at seven feet, six point four feet and such. And as far as the impervious area, there are a few in the area right actually on that, on Eightbells Road. That is, you know, probably like twenty-six, twenty-seven percent lot coverage, impervious area.
Any questions, anyone?
Anyone in the waiting room?
Uh, there are three members of the public for the next application, nobody is in the waiting room for this.
Okay. Any, anyone on the board have a problem with this?
Yeah.
No.
Not yet. Hold up.
Okay.
Pirate Street, public.
Okay, nobody has a problem with this, let's, uh, put your application. I move the, the appeal of Norges Shikenskaya, Shikenskaya, Shikenskaya. Twenty-three, Eightbells Road, Riverhead, SCTM number six hundred dash thirteen dash four dash two five, RA four zero zoning. Bavarian's and under relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven. We're proposed side yard setback is seven point, point five seven feet and minimum required is twenty-five feet. We're proposed combined side yard setback is twenty-eight point five seven feet and minimum required is fifty-five feet. We're proposed impervious surface is twenty point six five percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent. And we're proposed rear yard setback is forty-three point oh eight feet and minimum required is sixty feet. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the appeals are granted, we have two weeks, we should have a little take work for you and good luck with your project.
Good luck. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Evening you. What keeps on rubbing the speaker, is that you?
No, it's not me.
Why do I get blamed?
I'll take that one.
All right, close your, off you go.
Appeal number twenty twenty zero one eight, Annette Renner, twenty-six, Pirate Street, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred thirteen three twenty-six, RA forty zoning. Bavarian's and under relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven. We're existing lot is seventy-five point three square feet and minimum lot size required is forty thousand square feet. We're existing lot width is seventy-five feet and minimum required is one hundred and fifty feet. We're proposed side yard setback is twenty-six feet and minimum required is fifty feet. We're proposed side yard setback is seventeen point nine and minimum required is thirty-five feet. We're proposed combined side yard is thirty-seven point nineteen and minimum, minimum required is fifty-five feet. We're proposed rear yard setback is thirty feet and minimum required is sixty feet. And we're proposed impervious coverage is nineteen point four percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
Okay, do they have anyone on the screen?
The bottom is Jacobs, the applicant.
Okay. I can't see him, do we even get to see him?
They don't have video.
Oh, they don't have video, okay. Mr. Jacobs, if you kind of raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Mr. Jacobs?
He picked up there.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, okay.
He's there.
Mr. Jacobs?
Can you speak with him, Jeff? See if you can. That's a good idea. Hello? We cannot hear you. Can he text you back?
Yeah. I chat, I don't hear us, we're on turn, you might get nothing yet.
Well, we don't have a gentleman.
Here's a telephone caller just come in, maybe this is him.
Possibly. And where would the call be coming from?
It's six three one four nine five eight one eight three.
Okay, and where's the phone we answer?
Oh, it'll come in right here.
Oh, good, hello?
This might be him, if you'd like to talk.
Mr. Bond?
Uh, for Mark, he put him. Was it Jacobs?
No, I got him now. On the far right.
Yeah, we see the phone.
Hello?
Hello?
Who's this?
How are you doing? Um, my name is Sean Harrigan, whom am I speaking to?
Hello, brother.
Hold on now Sean, we'll try to get the, uh, the applicant on the phone.
Okay.
So maybe send a message to Mr. Jacobs and tell him we're going to be hearing other neighbors and then we'll hear their concerns.
Okay. We're, we're opening yours for public comment right now.
Yeah.
Please reconnect.
Well, he's certainly not trying to speak to us, is he?
Well, he's not there, so.
Who's the guy on the top left?
That's Janine, Nice or something.
So that wasn't Jeff Zahn, was it? Yes. So the guy on the top left is gone.
That's the previous, that's Jacob, so I can just.
Once you get rid of him.
Yeah.
He didn't hang up.
So iPhone X, Janine and Kendall are members of the public.
Okay, hit it.
I guess this new guy too, this phone, phone caller, so I will bring in iPhone X, if you'd like to talk to this person about the.
Well, the guy that's on the phone already, let's talk to him. He's sitting there, right? Well, they're all sitting on the phone. Well, the other two are video, who wants a phone?
They're all on different devices.
Oh, brother.
Well, pull somebody up, man.
Here we go, phone, the phone caller.
Hello?
Hello, hi, how are you doing today?
Okay, and your name is?
I am Sean Harrigan, I'm sitting here with Erica Kamalich, uh, she's one of the owners of twenty Pirate Street, just adjacent to twenty-six.
Okay, hold on, kind of raise your right hand, if you're both going to speak. Both of you raise your right hand, if you're trying to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
So state your names and your addresses.
Uh, my name is Sean M. Harrigan, I'm calling, I'm sitting here with Erica Kamalich, and she is one of the owners of twenty Pirate Street, the house adjacent to twenty-six.
Okay, is she gonna speak? She's gonna give her, her, her address.
Hi, this is Erica Kamalich.
Hi Erica, how are you? Did she swear to? Okay, he swore.
I swore, I swore open.
She didn't answer. Oh, brother.
Did you raise your right hand?
Who didn't answer? Oh, hang on, here's Erica, hang on sir.
Hi, this is Erica Kamalich.
Okay Erica, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Erica Kamalich and my address is twenty Pirate Street, Riverhead.
Okay, let's hear you.
Okay.
What are your comments? Erica, do you have any concerns?
Uh, yeah, we just have a, yes, this is Sean Harrigan, I'm back again.
Okay Sean, what are your concerns or are you, are you in favor of the project?
All right, all right, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I drew out the properties, uh, five by a hundred, I just wanted to figure out the actual footprint of the house.
We're getting a lot of feedback, a lot of echoing.
We're having technical difficulties.
Yes, it's very hard.
Do you have two devices, are you on a phone and watching on the screen?
Uh, yes, because we're not getting audio on the, uh, on the screen.
I see, so you're using the phone, well, as you're speaking, we're getting like two echoes.
I needed the other one, he's okay.
Yes.
Okay, right, 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 fix, shoot.
I'll let her turn hers off.
Go ahead, what's your concern?
All right, hang on one second. Okay, all right, hers is off, any better?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay.
What's your concern?
Yes, my first question is the actual footprint of the house.
Excuse me?
I was just trying to find out what the actual footprint of the house.
Okay.
Is, I, I think it's roughly, is it thirty-eight by thirty-six?
It's actually thirty-one by forty, the proposed house.
Thirty-one by forty, okay, and is the space on the?
It's basically over the existing house, it's gonna be a new, uh, house. They're not, right.
Essentially, it's gonna be pretty much the same setback.
Okay.
And it's essentially gonna be almost the same side yard, there really isn't much difference. The difference may be is it's, uh, it's gonna have, um, a bedroom upstairs, like a master suite upstairs. Uh, it doesn't appear to be a very large house. Have you talked to the contractor or the owner of the property?
Uh, no, my brother-in-law, I spoke to the, uh, the architect, he's trying to get some information from him.
Okay.
Uh, hang on one second, sir.
So, hello?
All right, okay, so we're going with thirty, thirty-one by forty and there is a second floor, that's what you're saying?
Yes, so Sean, if, if, you know, we.
Okay, uh, you tell me how many windows are on the upstairs floor?
Um, looks like one, two, three, four, five.
Uh, right, now, you can see the pictures there, does it look like it would be overlooking any, uh, privacy issues?
Um, I don't think so, but I, I would have to see what's next to the house, I was there on Monday. Um, but I didn't think about people looking out the window and looking down, um, but that's
Okay.
pretty common with two-story houses, but if I can make a suggestion, the plans, uh, we just received a copy of these plans. You can come down to town hall and take a look at them, go to the building department and review them if you would like.
Well, the, the issue, uh, sir, is that it is pretty common for two-story houses to look down on other houses. But on that particular block, there are really no two-story houses, other than the one you're building.
Um, okay, so that's your, um, that's your concern, I take it.
Yes.
Yes, we just wanna make sure, you know, it's a quaint little town there, we're just trying to make sure not to go stick out like a sore thumb.
Right, right, no, I get that, uh, again.
Yeah, uh, these were all originally, they were all summer bungalows, it's a very quaint little beach town. And we wanted to, um, you know, see that it would stay to that kind of theme.
Right, I, I get it, Reeves Park's a very nice little community and we know that. Um, the house doesn't really look out of the ordinary if you look, if you saw the plans. Uh, it's pretty simple, it's two bedrooms down and a dining room, living room and a little kitchenette. And upstairs is a master bedroom, it looks like. It doesn't look that tremendously big, but again, I would recommend you come down, take a look at it. And we could leave the hearing.
Okay, we're, we're actually down south, so we'll have to send our, uh, uh, Erica's sister down there to get a look at it, forward it to us.
Okay, so why did, why did you do this? Clarissa will have a copy of the drawings, the, the, the building. And if you send somebody down there, uh, go to the building department, ask for Clarissa, she'll come out, give you the, uh, give you the copy and because we're not making a decision tonight.
Yeah, no, I know that, thanks.
We'll give you folks time to check it out.
Have you seen any elevations? You haven't seen anything, correct?
No.
Okay. How about if I send you a picture?
Uh, you got your phone?
You got an email account?
Yeah, hang on, let me, I'll get your phone number.
Okay.
Six three one?
Six three one nine eight three nine nine.
Say that again, six three one?
Nine eight three, nine nine seven four.
Nine? Nine, eight, three. The last four digits again?
Nine nine seven four.
I can't hear.
Six three one nine eight three nine nine seven four.
Nine nine seven four.
Thank you, okay. All right.
So Leroy will send you a copy of this, but again, we're not making any decisions tonight. I still suggest you send somebody down and get a copy of the plans.
Yes.
And, uh, in the next meeting, we'll discuss everything again.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Okay, I sent it by text.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
All right, let's bring up the next call.
Okay, uh, the applicant is still in here, do you want to state the public?
Well, let's, let's get the applicant.
Let's try the, one more time, Jacobs? Yes, can I mute?
Mr. Jacobs, if you can hear us, unmute your button, please.
Can you present without the applicant?
Yeah.
You can definitely go off. I mean, can we have a hearing without an applicant? Well.
And he should have opportunity to respond to us.
We're, we're definitely not gonna do anything further. Until we hear from somebody.
All right, let's go to the next one.
Okay, uh, Janine Glusner.
Janine?
Yes, how?
Okay, Janine, hold on now, just kind of raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
State your name and your address.
Janine Glusner, twenty Pirate Street, Riverhead.
All right, Janine, let's hear what, let's hear what you have to say about the application.
All right, so my first question is, what is the square footage of the new build that you are doing?
Well, we're not doing it.
Right. What is the square footage of the new house that's being built?
Hold on one second.
At twenty-six Pirate Street.
Well, it's not on the plan, so I'll calculate it real quick, all right?
Thirty-one by forty.
The house is thirteen hundred and one square foot, it says. Where? On, uh, one of the plot plans, uh. Oh, good, okay. And the deck is a hundred and fifty-four, so they got a, uh, fourteen hundred and fifty-five point six square feet.
And how much of that is deck, three hundred?
One fifty-four.
Four fifty-four.
The house is thirteen oh one. It's on the one that doesn't have the overlay on it, Leroy, plot plan. Okay, I see it now. So the, the initial first floor is thirteen oh one, it does have decks, but there's also a second floor. And it doesn't show the calculation of the second floor because this plot plan is dealing with impervious surface only. So the second floor, I believe, is twenty-four by thirty-one.
All right, so my request is to know what the total square footage.
So it's about nineteen hundred square feet.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you see that?
It's about nineteen hundred square feet. With two floors. With two floors.
All right, so now the setback for the side yard.
Yes.
You are, they're asking to have encroach an extra eight feet?
Um.
Is that correct?
There is a side entrance with a deck, it looks like, a set of stairs. Um, let me see. Yeah, it is, uh, it is a foyer coming out, so, yeah, it's probably another, uh, hang on a second, please. It's about two point nine feet.
So I just, I have an objection to the side setback that they, that they're not in accordance with.
Are you next door, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I am, I, I'm at the house at twenty Pirate.
Are you east or west of the house, on the right side or the left, looking at the house?
If looking at the house, I'm to the left of the house.
Lot two oh one.
So how do I state my objection, is that being?
You're doing it right now.
You have, but what I would suggest.
It's.
You come down to the town, uh, the building department and get a copy of the plans and look at them, so you'll have an idea. Instead of us trying to explain to you what's going on.
Okay, so, it's.
We're not making it, we're not making a decision tonight.
Okay, I, I measured it, Janine? I measured it with a scale, the house that's currently there has a side yard of twenty-two point nine feet. And based on the, uh, the, the, the westward side part, it would be twenty feet. Thirty-three inches difference. So, um, you know, it's not that, you know, it's sort of like, you know, this much, so.
Okay, so if I come to the town, are you guys open now with COVID?
Uh, the building department is, if you wanna come and look at the surveys.
The, the survey is posted online, it's on the website.
Oh, so the survey, we were just told, is online, on our website.
Well, that, that's, no, it's more about the building plans, like you just said, so if I drive out there and I come to the town, are you open that I can see the building plan?
Yes, the plans will be in the building department, which is across from town hall on Howell Avenue.
Okay.
And you can come look at them as well.
Okay, because we are concerned of the height, the second floor.
Right.
That they are looking down on our smaller home. And it might not be in accordance with the theme of the smaller houses that Reeves Park currently has.
Okay.
And we were in understanding that this was a historical house or in a historical building, uh, area?
I don't believe it's an historical area.
No.
But, um, but there are nice summer bungalows in there, that's how the community started out. And people have, over a period of time, have added second floors on, on other streets. And in the last three or four years, a little more closer to the water. But, um, and, and, and there is some, um, things going on in there that have been allowed. And, uh, so that's a concern I know of yours, but it has been set as a precedent already that other houses have second floors. Just based on my knowledge of what has occurred up there.
All right, and, and additional question, I'm just curious, why has the property not been maintained with the landscaping and the overgrowth of all of the brush and?
Um, you probably would have to ask the current owner, I don't know if it's a contract.
I, I don't have access to the current owner, I don't know who the current owner is.
So, okay, has the house been lived in for a while, has it been vacant?
It's been vacant, so isn't the town responsible for making sure that the properties are being properly maintained?
Yes, it is the town's responsibility to do that, however, um, this could have been a, a contract situation where these people are buying the property and they're in contract now, I don't know if they're the owners, the contract, then D, I'm not sure.
Well, the, the owner is the sister of the person that was living there, that's no longer living there.
I see.
Who I believe lives, I mean, so all I'm saying is if you drove down the street and you lived on Pirate Street, their landscaping and overgrowth is literally overtaking the street.
Okay, so the sister took over according to what you know, so maybe the sister will be a better neighbor than the other one, that's a possibility. I mean, we haven't, we haven't even talked to the owners yet, we haven't been able to connect with them on the phone or on the video screen. So we definitely wanna hear what they have to say, and if you stay in the waiting room, I think you can probably witness and listen to their statements. I believe there's a, a Mr. Jacobs.
Yes, thank you, we're happy to do that.
We're on the phone. So we believe the property owner's representative is on the phone, we're hoping that he is or she is, and we, I think it's Kirk Jacobs. Who's a registered architect, so let's see what they have to say, and then if you wanna come back into the conversation after we're done speaking, we could do that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, sir.
So.
See if you can get Mr. Jacobs. Oh, I think he's on, he's on.
Mr. Jacobs? Keep telling us that, Jeff.
Mr. Jacobs!
What's going on here? I think you're suffocating in that mask. Raise your hand, Mr. Jacobs. There you go.
Mr. Jacobs must be a knockback guy. Nope.
So you call five one six 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 three? Zero seven five zero?
Yes.
N A? No answer?
So it's with the answering machine.
Oh, I see. Maybe. Don't say nothing bad about architects.
All right, do we have anyone else on the, we have another neighbor, put the other neighbor on.
Cancel the front again.
I think we're gonna have to move this off for two weeks.
Yeah. Kendall, are you there?
Yes.
Kendall?
Sure they are, Jeff.
Kendall?
Should we reboot?
Can you hear us?
All right, reboot the system. Control, alt, delete, buddy. Control all the weak, buddy. Blow it up.
Okay.
Well.
All right, give Mr. Jacobs one more shot, if he doesn't get it, then we're gonna adjourn us to the next meeting and start all over again.
I just asked him to unmute again. And it just unmuted.
Hello?
That was me, sorry.
You called his phone, Chip?
I've called the, it's ringing a couple of times.
Oh seven five oh?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's just those two answering machines.
Okay. All right, let's go back to that one lady who's just on, we're gonna tell her we're adjourned.
So we can't get Kendall and we can't get Mr. Jacobs.
So we're going to Janine.
Kendall just unmuted herself again.
When you get to Jacobs', his answering machine.
And Erica probably is still holding on.
So who's on now?
Is anybody on?
No, who's on first?
Can anybody out of the four people?
When you get to Jacobs' answering machine, might as well tell us to adjourn.
Yeah, Sean and Erica are still here.
All right.
All right, good. Well, it looks like we can't get hold of the applicant through the, uh.
Hallelujah.
Whatever, but we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn us to the next meeting, which is August?
Thirteenth.
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 We're having a lot of tech, technical difficulty.
So basically, we're starting all over again on the thirteenth of August. So to meet up, anybody wants any plans, call ahead of time. Call the town, seven two seven, thirty-two hundred, extension two four oh. And you'll get Clarissa on the phone, just ask her for a copy of whatever you need.
Okay.
And then you'll be more prepared for questioning of the, uh, the owner of the property or the architect, uh, next, uh, August thirteenth.
Clarissa?
Okay.
All right.
Scan this?
Okay, thank you.
Can you scan the plans? What kind of Democrats you got running this town?
All right, gentlemen, let's hear, uh, a motion to adjourn us to August thirteenth.
So Mr. Chairman, I move the appeal of twenty twenty dash zero one eight, Annette Renner, twenty-six Pirate Street, Riverhead, be adjourned to August thirteenth.
Second?
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Guzzolo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Aye, yah, yah.
Okay, so.
Well, at least we know you're alive out there.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
So I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor.
Aye.
So we hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor.
Aye. Can you shut us off? Good night, frustrated public.